Good afternoon. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Roson County, Texas will convene in a regular meeting at the City Hall, 107 South Hill Street. Regular meeting place thereof at 5:30 PM, May the 16th. We're gonna have our invocation and pledges, invocation this evening given by Alan Willis, our outgoing council member. Last time.
Special to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Alright, now we're going to administer the oaths to three council members for a two-year term ending April 30th, 2025.
Could I get, I'm doing all three at the same time? If you agree, gentlemen, come stand right here. Alright guys, if you would raise your right hand please. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Captain Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Councilman for the City of Caldwell.
The Councilman of the City of Caldwell.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
Will do the best of my ability. To preserve, protect, and defend. Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. Mayor's let it.
Thank you, Texas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Next, we'll have a presentation to our outgoing council member, Alan Willis.
Over here.
To Mr. Alan Willis for your unwavering support and underlinging guidance that helped guide our path to success. City of Caldwell is grateful for your 20 years of service and dedication to the City of Caldwell. You were a council member from May 2008 to 2008, and then again from 2011 to 2023. So.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. And this flag was flown at his last meeting last month. Oh, or City Hall. You need a flag?
Can the city have him touch the flag? Anyway, I'll try to make this short, but I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in Caldwell. And I can't think of a better city than, to be a kid, I mean, I took time for our gods. Going down and getting moss and stuff like that, Perry Brothers and whatever. Anyway, in 1974, when I graduated from Texas A&amp;M, I was thinking, so man, I was gonna leave town, be a big shot. And my dad asked me to join him in the business. So I did. It's the best decision man I ever made. And basically, I worked for him 10 years since I was a business, so I really enjoyed that. My dad was a great mentor. He was one of the smartest guys I ever knew. He was very common sense as well, and he was president of everything. Chamber of Commerce, the Fair Association Rotary Club, president of the school board. And he served 10 years on the council and 10 years as mayor. So I guess I basically followed his steps. And I was proud of that. So after nine years on the school board, 20 years here, and somewhere between 450 and 500 meetings, hey, it's time to move on. So I'm gonna ride off into the sunset and hope I don't fall off my horse.
And next, we have nominations and election of mayor pro temp for a year of May 2023 through April 2024. And I think per our city constitution, it is the person who served on council longest, correct? So do we have any nominations?
I nominate Kevin.
Do we have a second? All in favor of having Haven Novak serve as mayor pro temp for a year of May 2023 through April 2024? Raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, citizens to be heard on city-related topics. We have Mr. Troy Hales.
My name is Troy Hales. I live in the old center of North Hill Street. I want to apologize to the city manager and the lesson. Coming here this morning upset, wasn't just upset about the items I'm talking about tonight. I'm upset about some personal items. But I've calmed down since then, so hopefully I'll be okay. Anyway. I got a little problem behind my house. The water's backing up on my property. What happened is, I guess you want me to tell them this, or you want to tell them this? What happened with the water line?
Either way.
They put an eight-inch water line in through the property behind my house. Where the old highway department road went. And tied it in to the eight-inch line on the corner where I live. But anyway, in the process of doing this, the guy that was digging it out through the dirt over in the ditch where the old road used to go. And when they got ready to cover the lineup, they left it in this ditch. Well, they didn't, they didn't put it back on the roadway and smooth it out. They just left it in the ditch. So it blocks the water. And it backs it up on city property, and then it backs it up on mine. So I got, well, it's two gates are, where OSR continues, that's not a street. And it goes through two gates toward East Metro to the power line and the water line now. So what happened is, is the big puddle of water in there now. And I talked to the city manager before, and he said they would fix it. Well, this morning I was looking at this thing, and I said, you know, I don't think this is only ever get fixed, because it's too hard to fix. The dirt has run down now until the whole ditch come under the fence. And to fix it with the equipment, I think you're gonna have to pull the fence out, take the gate off, where you can dig it out. Or get in there with shovels and just shovel that out, if you're gonna leave the fence. You can't get in there with equipment to get it out anymore. So I got to thinking, this is never gonna get fixed. This is too hard. Who's gonna do this? So I just came up here and talked to him, and I decided to just address the part here. See what they think about doing it. I've been around a long time. I've been around a lot of projects a long time. And I know hard projects get pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. And I've just decided this morning, this is a project that's never gonna be done. I don't care when it gets dry. When it gets dry, it's not an issue. When it's wet, it's an issue. Like, you don't need to fix your roof. But anyway, so that's why I'm here. And I don't even have to come up here and bug somebody constantly to fix this, so this water doesn't back up.
You said.
And cause mosquitoes and all that.
You said they dug and then dumped dirt. Is that?
This is the part of the cap fleet project.
Okay.
We're doing that water line.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
So anyway, that's why I'm here. I really wanted to work a drain down that old highway department property.
So it wasn't, I just wanted to make, make clear that I want to show who dug and who dumped. That part.
And I don't know why he left it in a ditch. I don't know why he didn't put it on the other side, because the other ditch, there was no water running. Yeah, he put it in a ditch after water ran out, because it was downhill and it was easier to do. And he just filed it up, and it never was taken back out. And now it's rained on it, and you know how dirt shifts out? It shifted under the fence, and it shifted the whole thing. And now I got this big puddle that stands in front of those gates, and it backs up on my property. And see, they come to mow that grass on that 70-foot east behind my house. That they left there between my place and the apartments. It was left there for a road that they thought was gonna go up back there to that property on the other people owned it. I guess they thought it was something to do with going there, whatever. But now, I finally got cap fleet to start mowing it. So they was mowing it on a regular basis. They had to contract people to come in there and mow it. Well, last two times, they couldn't mow it, because they can't get through that water. Couldn't run their mowers through that water. And so they came and they weeded it all around it and left. So now the grass is, that's all. I don't know how long it'll be before they can mow it again. But that's the other issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
We, TexCon came out to look at it once before, and then couldn't see, because a lot of it had settled, what the issue was. Just pay an hour and meet at 9:00 in the morning, so I can understand exactly what it is, and we'll get on.
Thank you.
I got another item. Address the other one?
Sure.
The truck. The Atlas truck that parked on my street. That blocks half the street all the time. I don't know. I've been told that there's no city ordinance against parking in the roadway. So nothing could be done about it. But it's a hazard.
Every day, every time I come out, it's there.
With the cone.
There, he puts a cone behind it, and the cone sits out in the roadway further, so it makes the other lane there. When I drive up my street, kids across the street, I'm always afraid they're gonna be behind the truck. So I slow down and have to go by it really slow, make sure they don't come right up behind the truck. And I hit them. But I can tell you that 80% of the people drive down that street, and it's heavily traveled street. They just shoot right by there. They ain't worried about no kids or nothing. That bothers me. And I know, I think they've been telling people for a while. I don't know. I just, it just went on for months and months and months and months. It's always gotta have the street parking as a heavily traveled street. It's first street from the west, and people from, coming in from the west turn on Hull and go on OSR. And go to Walmart, then go to Brooks and Brothers. And I tell you how, it's a heavy enough traveled street that they put a four-way stop sign at Bray and OSR sometime ago. So it tells you how heavy it's traveled, but you wouldn't have a four-way stop sign on it. But you gotta go on Hull Street to get to OSR. So, I don't know. They tell me it's not any law against it, but it has to be. If you do enough research, there's a law against parking a vehicle and blocking half the street continuously on a heavily traveled street. And if there's no law against it, it should be. And if it's not, then somebody needs to do the right thing. You shouldn't be able, you shouldn't park your vehicle and block half the street just because you can. There's a right and a wrong thing here. And I know Atlas is a big company, and I worked for a big company. I worked for Alcoa 37 years, and I know they be ruthless, and I know they do. Alcoa would do what it wanted to, when it wanted to. Right or wrong, they entered into it. But it's just, this is not right. It's wrong. Block that truck there all the time. It just shouldn't be there. So what can be done about it? I don't know. But a child gets hit, because she's going right by that truck all the time. And the school bus gotta go around it every day. And if cars is coming off the highway, and I've seen them come off the highway, two or three, and the bus is going around the truck, then those cars have to stop, unless another car comes up behind them. They ain't got no place to stop. They gotta stop in the highway to wait till the bus gets around the truck. So those other three cars can go on, and then they can clear the highway. So you forcing sometimes a car to stop in the highway. Because the traffic's involved up there. It's more, maybe it's more of a right and wrong issue. But I think if we address the right people, maybe they'll do the right thing. Let's hope people wanna do the right thing. I'll thank the people that most people wanna do the right thing.
Okay?
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have items on the consent agenda, which is consider approval of the minutes from the April 18th meeting. Also, to approve the appointment of Larissa Rock, Maria Mulligan, and Christine Rios to the Library Advisory Board for a two-year term limit. Do we have a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda? Do you have a second? All in favor of passing, of approving most items on the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, we've got a public hearing. 2020 Texas CBBG Sewer System Project Contract Number 7220071 to review performance and obtain comments.
I'm Vicki Wickrant-Worx, and I was the project manager on this project. This is actually the sewer line that was laid on Bank Street, which has just been completed. And this public hearing is to obtain any citizen input, if someone's yard was damaged, or give them opportunity to come in so that we can make, make things right before the contractors weren't prepared yet.
Is anyone here for that? Do you have any questions about it, comments?
Did we address?
We're still working on that. We're still, I mean, the rain that we've had, you know, and just so everybody's clear on that, the repair of the asphalt was not in the scope of this job. So it's something that we'll have to do outside of this. We're still just waiting for that base to dry up before we can do anything. We've gone back, you know, time and time again, and refilled holes that have developed. And just as a part of that traffic, I'm sure we're still getting some, some rocks that are getting hitched up in people's yards. But as it dries out, we'll work with TexCon to get it buttoned up.
Okay. No one's here. We'll keep them in. And the regular agenda items. Presentation regarding the new Rural Medicine Program. Our Curtis Donaldson, Dean of A&amp;M School of Medicine.
I wish I was the dean, but I don't. Anywhere, our dean might take the exception. I won't tell her that y'all refer to me as the dean. I'm the, so good evening, thanks for talking about this. I've visited with quite a few people in that community already, and thanks to Gordon, and spread the word. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk again about it. I am the Director of Rural Medicine. I live in Mason, Texas, so I come from a rural community. I was born and raised in Valley Mills, Texas, up by Waco, which is half the size of Mason. So I've been in rural communities most of my life. And living in Mason, had the opportunity to work with Texas A&amp;M to pilot a program. It was aimed at getting our current students at Texas A&amp;M, who are in our medical school, to the tune of 200 students a year, the opportunity to come and experience a two- to four-week clinical rotation in a rural community. And we've got a real problem in Texas, and that is, and it's not just with doctors. It's with, it's nursing, it's veterinarians coming back to rural Texas. And so this spoke to my heart. I had another job at the time, and was doing this as a volunteer. Pilot in Mason went so well, it spread to Lano, San Salvador Junction, Menard, and Brady. It went so well in those communities, the dean called me and said, we wanna go statewide. And I said, well, that's great, but I have a job. And so she asked me to come to work for Texas A&amp;M to help spread the program to the rest, to more counties, rural counties. So let me just talk real quick about the heart of the program. So I had an opportunity to be on the front end of this with a, with a family physician, Dr. Sam Hoag, and go through the mechanics of what can we do to help curb this? And so kind of, and I've got these, I'll leave behind, but, but kind of it's three legs to this stool. And the first leg is, is we partner with the local medical providers. We sign an affiliation agreement that allows us legally to send our students to spend two to four weeks in this community working under the mentorship and supervisory of the local physicians. And so it's a teaching opportunity for our students to spend those two to four weeks, if you will, in Caldwell. What that does is it gives them exposure and then awareness about what it's like to be practicing medicine in rural Texas. I'm gonna come back to what the outcomes have already been in just a second, but let me hit on the second leg. So that's important, because it's a shorter timeframe. If those students come out and they experience a positive rotation, and they decide, I wanna go back to Caldwell, they'll be here in three to four years. They still have residency they have to go do, but that's not, that's not a long window, right? But as we studied the, the program, or the, the other issues, we said, the most likely person to come back to rural Texas is a rural Texan. And so what are we doing about the Grow Your Own program, like they've done in Hamilton, Texas, where they have six physicians, and all six of them were born and raised in Hamilton, and they're all back there practicing medicine? So what can we learn? Let's don't reinvent the wheel. What can we learn about that? And part of that was exposure at an earlier age. And so in every community we go into, besides just working with a medical provider, that second leg of the stool is working with the ISD. In most rural communities, there's not a health science track. There's not a program where they learn about healthcare opportunities. This is led by the School of Medicine, but as we go into the ISDs into elementary and middle school and high school, we expose them to nursing, pharmacy, dentistry, public health, and now veterinary medicine. That's a brand-new add to our program. And so we find that especially females that are about third and fourth grade, where they're already starting to figure out what they wanna do. Guys, we're a little later, no surprise. And that's more in that fifth, sixth, seventh timeframe. But, but, but history has told us, and statistically, that we need to be exposing at an earlier age. And so that's what this program does. There's more details behind it, but I don't want to spend all y'all's night listening to me talk about this program. Just know that there is an ISD element aimed at growing your own. If we can get kids from Caldwell, Texas, that wanna go, and I'm sure it's already happening, but if we can expand that to be, even if it's EMT, science teacher, doesn't matter, those are all wins. You know, all of those are wins as far as we're concerned, relative to what their choices might be. But that program aims at that. That's the long game. If a student in the seventh grade says, I wanna be a doctor, 17 years before they're back in Caldwell. So we've got that short game, addressing the shorter-term needs in rural Texas. The long game, building that pipeline from the communities. And then the third leg, which is the, the most important leg, for sustainability anyway, is as we developed this in Mason, as a pilot, we said, you know, leaders come, I mean, physicians may come and go, schoolteachers may come and go, superintendents, and those other two legs. But community leaders are usually here to stay. They've chosen to move here. We have a business here. So it's the community stakeholder team is kind of the key to this. And that takes the pressure off the, the medical provider to plan out an itinerary. It takes the pressure off the ISD, because there's a community stakeholder team in each of these counties. 16 counties at this point we're up to, that plan out what that itinerary looks like. And when I say itinerary, it's because we have layered in a community immersion piece. And so it's not just about the clinical time in Caldwell. It's, can I see myself living here? And, and we know about this, you know, because, because the pilot was three years ago. The very first student that rotated, Kevin Windecker, on his drive back home said, you know, I could see myself living there. And I said, well, tell me about that, because, you know, we need to know how to tweak this and make it better. And we didn't know what's going right and what's going wrong. And he said, no, it was that community time. It was going to Lions Club. It was going to Commissioners Court. It was going to City Council, standing up and talking about the program. You know, it was eating at Nachos. It was eating at Willow Creek. It was, you know, I'm sitting there, and people are coming to me, hey, I saw you in the clinic today. You know, it was getting out in the community that I started driving back and thinking, I could live here. And, and now it's happened three more times with three more students. So very first student has now signed up to go to work in Mason in Junction, Texas, as a physician. They hired him before he even went to residency. He has signed up. He is committed. He's coming back. And there's a program where they can file to get him a grant to help pay for his med school. But he said, that, that doesn't matter. I mean, that'd be great if it does, but this is where I wanna be. Why? Because when I was there in the clinic, it was the intimacy with the patient. It was the pace. He said, your physician, Dr. Horn, knew everyone. Knew everyone's name, knew their children's name. One patient came in, hell, he knew the dog's name. He knew everybody in town, and, and that appealed to Kevin. That's what he wants. But he said, if y'all didn't have this program, I would've never known. Like, I wouldn't have been able to go and spend that time and go, damn, this is what I wanna do. So, you know, programs work. And the second student that rotated was an M4 student as well. He went back and declared family practice rural. The third student, she was an M1. She's now coming back for rotations in four other counties as an M3. And she said, I'm kinda already leaning to Lano, you know? And that cohort we had out there, we all played each other football on Friday night. So when we have cohort calls, you can't imagine. I mean, everybody's like, well, Chloe's coming here. And they're like, well, no, I think she's coming here. So they're recruiting. These community stakeholder teams know they're recruiting, you know? In A&amp;M terms, they're Jimbo Fisher, and this is that five-star recruit they're looking for, because they know they need physicians, you know? And, and, and as I went into counties, they started saying, hey, we need nurses too. So nursing is now coming with us. And in most communities, nursing's now set up to do precepting. Well, what do we know about that? Wherever nurses precept, they stay within a 30 to 60-mile range. So if they're precepting nurses in Brady, some are gonna end up there or not far away. They're precepting nurses in Lano, they're gonna end up there or not far away. If they're precepting nurses in Caldwell, they may already be doing it, but if we have a program in A&amp;M, they're gonna end up here. We know that. And so, and then they said, hey, we need veterinarians. So it took a while, but med school's now on board, and we're gonna be getting 18 students starting next spring. And again, the key is that community stakeholder team. If we didn't have the lodging taken care of, that's what that team does. They find somebody with a cabin or an Airbnb or a place for, or an Aggie family for the student to stay with, or a Longhorn family, right? Doesn't matter, right? We all need doctors. And so who can that student stay with? That community stakeholder team takes care of that. And because they have that element in place, we can also drop in veterinarian students because that was vet, med school's only issue. They were like, well, where do they stay? Well, we have that thing care of. You know, we have people in the community that are willing to do that. And so that's kind of the essence of the program. We've grown from, I've been, started to work for them seven months ago, eight months ago. And we had six, seven counties, and we're up to sixteen. We're in South Texas in Starr County, which is Rio Grande City, Brooks County, Palpurius, Uvalde County, Real County, which is Lakey, Clifton, Texas, Baske County, Hamilton, Hamilton County, and Palapinto, which has been in Wells, and a few others. And we have sixteen counties that are in process that have called and said, we heard about it, we wanted to. Because county judges talk, they go to TAC meetings, and they all start talking. Medical providers talk, and so our phone rings and they say, hey, I want to do this. We want to be part of it. We need physicians. And Brady, Texas, is gonna get a doctor out of the program. And the CEO of that hospital said, I spent forty thousand dollars last year on a headhunter, got a physician, and three months later he left. And now I have a chance to get somebody who really wants to be here. And they came and they saw and they said, this is where I want to be. So it helps everyone in the process, and our students especially are starting to see the value of going back to rural Texas. So, do you have any questions?
I have a comment. Our high school has a very active, successful health career pathway. We have an EMT program.
That's awesome.
As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we've got nine girls taking their certification CMA exam tomorrow. They also have a vet tech program through our ag science department. So I'm excited about this because we've got lots of interest at the high school level for health careers.
That's awesome. You probably have HOSA here. The high schools may be big enough. Maybe that's what it is. I don't know. There's a H O S A, and that's high schools across Texas that have this Health Science Academy or something. No, it's not the end.
No, I know that we've partnered with Brazos Valley, Brazos County for the EMT program, and now we're with Lee County for the EMT program. But.
Awesome.
Again, very successful pathway.
Yeah, that's great. So we want to be a partner in the community. I mean, we're neighbors. I mean, I'm not. I live in Mason, but I drive all over the state. I'm, you can ask Gordon, I'm on any given day, I'm, you know, in some other region. We're fixing some up in East Texas, in Trinity County, and Houston County, and Crockett, Texas, and a few others. So, but yeah, we're excited. It's a, it's a layup. I tell everybody to be in Caldwell, Texas, if you're Texas A and M School of Medicine. So we're, as y'all know, our campus is on forty-seven, so it's, you know, you're here in nothing flat. And it gives the students an opportunity to even commute over here for these rotations. So, perfect. Any other questions? And I can leave these. It's just a, it just, it just goes through the kind of the three legs, and then the back is a map. Our executive director's a guy named Kia Parsi, some of y'all may know him. I wasn't gonna say that till the very end, so. But anyway, no, he's, he's executive director of Archie, which is the Texas A and M Rural Community Health Institute. But he's also loaned to us part-time as our physician because I'm certainly no doctor. Okay, go. Thanks. Can we leave this here or leave you here? Take one pass around?
Okay, next. Capital equipment purchase of a street sweeper in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars.
So I think I mentioned at the end of last meeting, our street sweeper burned up. So it was considered total loss by the insurance company. I believe it was a two thousand nine model. They gave us fifty-five thousand dollars for it, so we're looking to buy a new one. New one's cost two hundred and seven, so there'll be some adjustment there. You can take the fifty-five off of that. Still need some council approval to go forward and purchase.
Jared, what's in that fund already or is it?
We have some, yeah, we have the funds to take care of it.
Do we have a motion to purchase a street sweeper? Second? All in favor, raise your right hand, of purchasing a street sweeper. Motion passes. Next, we're going to convene into executive session. So if you guys can scoot on out.